This conference will now be recorded.
We are going to call to order the Monary Select Board on July 15th. Susan and Justin are present in town hall. We're missing Frank at the moment. At 5:05 PM.
We need to call to order the Finance Committee as well at 5:00.
Probably you should be acting sheriff since your lawyer's serving him.
Alright, I'll try to take some notes.
Good job.
I'm reaching out.
Mr. Alvin.
So we're saying at what time did we say? 5:07?
I think 5:05.
5:05.
My computer says 5:01. I don't know why the difference is, but.
I seem to recall, I know his kids were coming up, so he may have said that he couldn't come this afternoon.
He said he would try to make it.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be quick. It's gonna be particularly quick for Finance Committee, but even Select Board, unfortunately, we're not across the finish line on at least the treasure contract, so.
Let's, let's do it.
Let's just get right into it. Roger, do you want to start with just the reserve fund transfers?
Sure.
Just for the Finance Committee?
Yeah, I have three reserve fund transfers there. I have four reserve fund transfers.
Do those keep them in?
There are multiples of things that go over from covering, there's a hundred and fifty dollar request from the reserve fund transfer for the treasurer's payroll services. There was a, the bottom line budget for the transfer department. It was about a hundred and fifty dollars short, and this, we're trying to figure out, there's a, the treasurer payroll services was a little off the way that the, we're trying to figure out, I don't know exactly how they, how they, the invoices came. I have to follow up on that for this coming fiscal year. But it ended up being short.
Payroll for people who work the treasury?
Yeah, it's the treasurer payroll services, so.
Okay.
It's time and attendance payroll services.
Okay.
And I'm just sort of like looking at the invoices, and I'm not quite certain how they're working, and that's what I'm trying to figure out for this upcoming fiscal year.
Right.
That's how they work, because I didn't really know how they work, because we seem to get some that are like thirty-two quantity, twenty-seven, twenty-four quantity. We might get one a month, two a month, so I'm just trying to figure out what those things mean. But it ended up being short about a hundred and fifty dollars, so I'm just moving a hundred and fifty dollars into that line, even though the line's negative. It ends up bringing that, bringing that whole dollar value up, which ends up zeroing out the budget, and so that's what that one's for.
Zeroing out that budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Because even though there might be a negative line item, it's still, there's other positive line items, so it just kind of brings it all together in math.
So the subaccount.
The subaccount.
The subaccount's super negative, but the whole line.
The whole line item is positive, but this will bring it all, this is actually slightly negative. This will bring it all up to zero.
Okay. One just thought that I'm having, I've never been sure of how we paid for time and attendance a hundred percent, but it might be per user.
That's what I'm thinking, because it's not a consistent number.
Yeah.
It's like, so I don't know if it means like we get charged every time a person goes into it and looks, which seems kind of odd. But I'm gonna follow up on that and figure out how it actually works.
They used to charge by the payroll, so if it's one payday, the preparation one payroll was one two. And sometimes we got in trouble when we had twenty-seven paydays.
Yeah, I think this is more.
It happens that way, and because two paydays at the end of the year, so you have the July.
I think this is more about our staff employees going in and using it. It changed since we went, two years ago about, we went from the old fashioned way of everyone sending in their hours to the new time and attendance system. And we pay for, it might be per user, but it might also be when they need to go in and spend extra time on Monary.
Yeah, I have to figure out what these hours are.
Because we have a lot of troubleshooting in the past couple of years of different things that have come up. And I think they might charge us hourly. I wonder too if it fluctuates on how many people are getting paid. Because some, because some payrolls were only paying the full-time employees, and then others were paying all the stipended people. And then more et cetera.
Part timers come in or something.
Yeah.
So that's that one.
So do we need to, do you want us to vote them all together at the end? I mean, we're signing them.
No, is that okay? You do that.
I guess we'll do all the reserve transfers.
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll vote on these, I guess, and then vote on appropriations. So this is again, this is a reserve fund transfer. This is the community center water, I spoke community water. And the balance was at minus eight dollars, and so this is, there's one invoice that hasn't yet been posted that's sitting in there. And so this is to cover that, that invoice plus the eight dollars, which will make again this zero.
I'm in trouble, so I'm gonna charge you the water.
Wait, so how much is it?
No, it's at minus eight dollars.
It is at minus eight, so are we putting eight in?
No, we're putting sixty in because there's another invoice that's getting posted. And that will, that will actually sort of zero out that, the overall budget again will bring everything to zero.
Oh, okay, so the, that whole line is down?
So, so you have to think of it, let's just pretend that the, that the, that the budget for the community center is like a thousand dollars. And right now, it's like at minus eight dollars, even though it's a thousand dollars. But that one line, that one line item is at minus eight, so it brings everything down, so putting that sixty dollars in will bring up the minus eight. Cover the minus eight as well as the forty-three dollar water bill.
The Monary Company hasn't raised the rates in fifteen years.
Yeah.
It's too hard to budget.
Well, you know what, you know what the difference is?
It's not the rates.
Up until two years ago, we always paid for the community center out of the Valley Galley revolving fund. So we just made an operating budget for the community center, I think it was two years.
Yeah. This may be the first full year, I think it is, right?
So they probably got it wrong.
They're still learning.
But, that being said, you're saying these whole line items, could we just, I mean, this is fine, it sounds like it's getting the job done, but in the future, can we just transfer into the line rather than into the subaccount, or are they saying that we need to well specify which sub-line?
We don't have to, there's, there's no, there's no account that is the whole account.
Yeah.
So there's not like a zero, like a, there's not like a zero-one-one-nine-one.
Yeah.
That is this dollar. It's a zero-one-one-nine-one, and then the subaccount's after that.
Yeah.
And so that's why you end up going into each actual line item.
Yeah.
And the other thing I'm trying to do is sort of look at the appropriation as it is sometimes. That sort of drives how things get moved around as well. This is another one for parks. They're in kind of the same situation. They have a negative in, a negative at this point, and this will cover a remaining invoice as well as.
What's the total?
The total is three hundred dollars.
Okay.
And the present balance is actually at negative twenty-three, so it's just gonna cover some more.
And what's outstanding?
It's like a hundred and fifty dollar invoice, I believe they have, that we have to cover.
Okay.
It's currently in the, it's in the open, not yet posted.
I'm glad that these are all relatively minor.
Yeah.
None of the things that we, well, I hope to avoid big surprises.
We can agree with that assumption.
We'll see, still got somewhere to go.
I know.
The water rate's based on usage, so the problem may be not the, no?
Oh, no, it's anyway, how much is in the reserve? Yeah, it's flat, no, we don't have meters.
Okay, so I wonder why they're not.
They don't want meters because some people don't use, some of them people, they still pay full amount. So it's hard to budget with seventy people, their water.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, this left, it's a flat, at the end of this, or?
Either way, each house pays the same, each house pays the same.
Yeah, we have the same basic fee, four hundred and thirty dollars.
Two thousand two hundred.
There's an extra fee for a number of faucets. It goes way back, like before the telephone was invented. And, you know, and it's like it's five hours per faucet, so everybody's bill is off by a little, it's a pain, but the bill frankly. Because you have to be careful, because everybody's bill is a little bit, five hours, it's right, you know, how many cows you have and things like that. It's small town.
That's for Jeff. Or you can have one too, that's a, that's a.
How much a cow costs?
This is our, it's a base sheet that she uses, that she likes for them to have to see what's going on. And this is.
I already had that in the behind parts.
Yes, yep, and this is the accountant financial services, which it looks like there may have been slight budgeting error because it was off by seventy-five dollars.
In what?
The accountant financial services.
Okay.
So it's like seventy-five dollars short. I didn't, I haven't bought it thirty-nine thousand, thirty-nine thousand three hundred. I don't know exactly where that little tweak happened, but it seems that, because he seems to give the same amount every single. I haven't really had the opportunity to go back to the entire fiscal year and look.
Yeah.
Is it just the year it's that weird?
It's a little odd.
I'm not quite certain where it came from, because it's pretty consistent what gets, what's its budget at. I'd have to go back and look and see what the, what he gave at the very beginning. And I'd have to go back and look and see if maybe there was a invoice that was off.
Unless there was some extra expense for a phone call or.
Yeah, he's pretty, they're, they're both pretty consistent, both the treasurer and the accountant, so I'd have to go back.
Yeah, the appropriation was definitely thirty-nine thousand three hundred.
So it ended up being seventy-five dollars off at the end. I don't know where that came from.
So those are the reserve funds?
Those are the reserve funds, yeah.
Yep.
I had four of those. Did you say they were five, or they were?
Oh, no, no, that was four, right?
That was four, okay, good.
Oops, I think that. Yes.
And I'm looking at the contract now for the accountant. And it says services begin on October 1st, 2023, and go through September 30th, 2024. Reminder, we should renew that sooner later. And it says thirty-nine thousand three hundred, which was the same number as the town meeting minutes.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look and see. I really honestly did not have a chance to go back.
Thirty-two, seventy-five per month.
Thirty-two seventy-five, so somebody cut a thirty-two hundred check instead of a thirty-two seventy-five.
Does he give you the full transaction listing for each account, or do you just get all the accounts? I know they can generate the detail, and a lot of times you can just go through there and say, oh, there's seventy-five dollars for office supplies. It shouldn't be there.
Yeah.
It's just a possible.
It could be, to be honest.
This past couple of weeks, I didn't. So this, now we're into the transfer appropriation requests. Yeah, so these require both Finance Committee and Select Board. And this is for the, just spell that one too. This is for the building inspector. It's going back to the fact that he's been struggling this year with, there was a, I think it was a reserve fund transfer. They covered some of his fees. Yeah, and this is kind of catching back up on everything that he's finally putting his hours in and all, and he did have the same situation. The permidize application came online. He had, you know, spent a lot of time on that, and he's had some extra work to do with the three camps in town.
Should we have voted on the reserves?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right, yep.
So is there a motion for the Finance Committee?
I make a motion that we approve for reserve fund.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Hearing none.
All in favor?
I oppose officially.
We know times, we're not involved in that.
That's true.
Well done.
And that takes care of the reserve fund.
That's a reserve fund transfer, so there's like twenty-two hundred dollars left in that.
I saw that much.
So, I, probably, as I was going down through everything, trying to figure out where everything was today, I probably could use one of these for the reserve fund transfers. But I just was like, had gone through them, had written some notes, and kind of got, did work through what they were.
I like that she's keeping.
Yeah. So this is for the building inspector. Salary again is just finalizing all the payroll that's owed as he's gone and putting extra hours and everything. And I'm still learning how even the posting and the open invoices and posting works and all that. So like, for example, right now, there are twenty-one pages like this of items that are, haven't been posted yet. So, and they're only posted as soon as the check gets printed, checks get printed, which don't happen, which only happen every two weeks. So I have to go through that, hope and make sure I don't miss something, to make sure that within this past couple of weeks, the budgets haven't gone over. So it's a bit of a string, I'm trying to find a report that.
That date the checks to June.
So, yeah, so they, they have a couple of different, so they have, right now, they have, they're in a, they have a supplemental warrant, warrant right now for the, for payroll. It's already been done, but for all the, for the checks. So they have that, it's kind of sitting there, and that actually, those don't go from open to posted until the treasurer comes in and actually writes a check for that. And once that happens, then they post the invoices. So right now, there is no, there's no report that you can run that says, here's a line item, right, here's an account. These are the open invoices. These are the posted invoices, so theoretically, this should be what your budget is if all those opens are posted. There's nothing like that. So I have to go through this, hopefully not missing any, any accounts that were like at, you know, seventy-five dollars, or eighty, or a hundred dollars, or four hundred dollars, and then find out that in here is a, you know, six hundred dollars worth of invoices that I haven't been able, that I didn't see.
Each department should be tracking its own and not overspending, which I understand is difficult for them.
They should be, but they run into the same problems, which is, that's the same problem that they run into, is that, that's one of the things I'm gonna try and figure out to give them, is that as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, they'll get a report in the middle of the month that tells them what is going on at the end of the previous month. So in that two-week period, they've already submitted invoices, so they don't know.
Yeah, but I think, I think it just goes back to, I mean, we're a little bit behind the eight ball, but it goes back to in May, just telling them they need to be prepared.
Be on track.
Yeah.
On top of this, so that's kind of where that is. So this is, this is eight hundred dollars.
And we're taking it from where?
This is actually coming from, it's still within the, it's still within the building commissioner's budget, but it's taking it out of expenses and putting it into salary. So, and those are voted.
And what's the total?
Now, the total's eight hundred dollars.
So if you want to just go through them, and then we'll vote on them all at their function.
So this is, this is still the town administrator. This is the town office, this is going from the town office custodial. This is one thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. This is still part of that figuring out what happened on the payout with the town, with the previous town administrator. This is where at the very end, at the last payroll, it ended up being in the negative, which kind of told me what was going on. So that will cover the payroll on that. That's going from the town office custodial, because we had a big custodial line item, but that, that line item is being taken care of by Sheldon down at the DPW, so he comes in. That's one thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Did we, we zeroed that in the new budget, right, for two thousand?
I think we did actually.
And that's because of payroll for the prior administrator.
That's, that's because, it's not their payroll, but because of the payout from the previous administrator, it's kind of the.
So she had a budget of accrued vacation time, which she was owed for, so that's what the payout.
So the ministry collected, you're right.
Yeah.
I'm purposely not gonna get into that discussion at all, since I don't have to. God bless you all.
So this is, this is the, going, this again is going back to the fire department compensation.
They're on the record.
They had a big May and a big June, and I'm still getting caught up on it, and it's, this will actually finalize their, their compensation. It's, it's actually, I got it out of cemetery grounds maintenance, because there was a significant amount of money left in that.
That's for, say that again.
This is for the fire department compensation.
And how much was the amount?
Three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars, and this will cover all of their, all of their remaining compensation, because they were in the negative.
And we can take it from the cemetery?
Yep.
And it's?
How much did you say?
Three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars.
We can move stuff from anywhere during the county, but not.
Doesn't make sense. Motors go down a line item, and then we go hand, I know, it's where the law sits. It wasn't like this always, just within this century, it wasn't that way.
Was it the Municipal Modernization Act?
Yeah, it was something like that. It was in effect in two thousand twelve, ten, when I came here, it was in effect.
At the end of the day, I mean, I guess it makes sense to me, because the, like, at the end of the day, everybody makes small errors. You try not to, but some are unknown expenses. And if you have it and you've raised the taxes, to go back to a town meeting doesn't make any sense to me.
No, it doesn't.
This makes more sense than that.
In a way, in a way, it's pretty sweet that we can do it, really.
You see that the private sector and not-for-profits.
You don't worry about it.
You don't worry about it.
You don't have to appropriate to me.
You're supposed to have a five million dollar budget, and as long as you come in under that five million dollar budget, it doesn't matter if you go from this section to this section, you know, as you divide it.
I mean, it should matter internally, because you want your people to be doing a good job, but at the end of the day.
But you're not using more than you have.
Exactly.
So here too, we're not using more than the town budget.
Right.
This is for the police.
Overall.
This is from police part-time.
Keep us on track, thank you.
This is for, for one thousand nine hundred and six dollars for police, for the police full-time officers, coming from these part-time officers.
Oh, great. Full-time from part-time.
From part-time, it's covering some extras, covering.
We did that already as a reserve fund.
We did that, yeah, so that was getting, it's these, I'm still trying to figure out how these things open and close, and when the dates, when it all happens. And so this was that one thousand nine hundred and six dollars, which they're just doing, I know Brian was taking a lot of vacation time, and they were covering a lot of those shifts.
So it basically, it's about OT.
Yeah, and it's not surprising, because we're, we don't have a lot of part-time police officers, so we're sort of full-time police officers are working more.
And Brian hadn't been taking vacation.
Oh, my gosh.
When we did the budget meetings, he, he was like, I'm working my full time, and I think I said to him.
I did too, yeah. I was really worried, he was covering for everybody, I'm like, you are going to kill yourself, stop that.
He was making a mistake, you know, my.
Yeah, he covers mostly, yeah, he covers most of the overnights, the midnights, eights, and.
But it was just this year that his staff was finalized, right?
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so, but the, the part timers there are running into trouble finding the, to justice claim, they're really struggling.
You know about that whole change, right?
Yeah, well, there were a lot of part timers who couldn't find anybody, then it went to three full times or something like that.
The state changed the rules about part-time cops completely.
Oh, okay.
Um, so basically, the only kind of part-time cops now are full-time cops, ones that were trained to be full-time cops. So they had to either go to Bridge Academy or be fully trained. There's no more special dispensation for a part-time cop.
There's no more part-time training or anything.
What started to happen, I know around the country, because my son's in the field, is small towns would hire somebody April 1st, and there's no training, let's say, till November 1st. So the person's completely green, you know.
With a gun on him.
With a gun, then a taser, and the whole rest of it, and, you know, has no clue. And they don't know how to drive, they don't know how to shoot, and they don't know how to, and, and that was really.
And larger municipalities will hire somebody and pay them while they're in the academy.
Right, yeah. Your job starts when you're in academy. Of course, you get fired in the moment, the gun knows.
So this is, this is going from the DPW foreman's wages to the DPW Highway 3 wages for six hundred and twenty dollars. And it's covering some missed punches that happened while covering shifts, and there was some, just some other time issues that were involved in that one too, so.
When you say to Highway, to Highway wages, you said.
Yeah, so I'm moving it from one to the other.
And why, right, but why are we, why do we have extra in foreman?
I don't know. I haven't had a chance to really go through and look line item and line item from July 1.
And it was six what?
Six hundred and twenty dollars. It was like seven hundred and some odd, each.
Right, they changed the foreman this year, so that.
Each account actually had a little bit of money left over in it. Like his had seven hundred, a couple of them had two hundred. They were, they were all like right around.
Like cold, huh?
I don't know where it came from.
His salary.
I know, well, not the foreman.
Not the foreman.
He's hourly.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, foreman, I, foreman, I translated superintendent, right, so I'm just assuming the rates, we set the budgets, but the rates don't, we've had a lot of difficulty in paying people, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know where, I don't know.
There's just something hinky there.
I don't know why there's.
Well, but here's part of the problem. They come in for overtime, for snow and ice.
But we have an overtime account that.
I understand, but sometimes then they don't work, sometimes they take, they may take flex time.
Oh, okay, okay.
So they may come in like for fifteen hours overnight on a Sunday.
So we're paying our, the overtime account for that, but they were not paying.
And then they may work less than a month and a half, but you follow up with Jim on it, don't quote me, don't take that as word, but.
But that at least is a plausible scenario.
That's a plausible explanation, is that if they, if they do a bunch of winter overtime, you may take flex time.
Yeah, so we're just trying to figure that out, trying to straighten that all out.
And, and you still, like, with the overtime, still making cry above and beyond that base salary, but now.
It's not that they're getting stinted, I just worry about like what that means if the regular salary line is below where it should be right now, and here, what's the hair?
Well, I translated superintendent, so I was really. I, sometimes.
No, his, his.
Doesn't mean.
Right, yeah.
His was perfect, so. And his last one is, just, just got this the other day, and it's all part, it's also is swirling in with that three hundred dollars from the, from the, for the parks that we just did on the reserve fund transfer, and that, an invoice came in that, that was for the last week in June for the lifeguards. And I, I can't find the, the previous lifeguard contract, but this came in and that budget line that they have for the lifeguard admin was short by about eighteen hundred dollars. Actually, that was like eighteen hundred and sixty-one dollars I have here, so I just did nineteen hundred dollars just to make certain that it covered everything. And they, it was just short that amount of money, and I'm not quite certain, I was always confused with this, with this contract, because when you look at the contract, like I'm looking at the latest one, and it, it puts in FY24 value and FY25 in the one contract, so I, I'd have to go back.
Because of the change of fiscal year.
Fiscal year, so I'm not quite certain how that worked on the other end in July with respect to June.
I think I.
And now June is here, and we're.
I have a little bit of insight, I think, like for this fiscal year, when we planned the lifeguard budget, we were trying to decide which plan we wanted to go with for the summer.
Yeah.
And we knew, but we have to set the budget for the fiscal year, so we always know we're paying for next June. It's kind of out of the very wrong. We pay from the very end of June through August, but that first week or two is in one fiscal year, and the rest is in the next fiscal year.
Weird.
So.
It's hard to figure out.
When we set the budget this year, we just said, we're just gonna set the budget like we're paying for this summer, and it might be a little bit off, because next summer when we go to Rees, get our lifeguards from Berkshire South, that last week in June might be a little bit more than the previous year, but it's hard to predict.
I think it's kind of gonna happen.
First is coming up.
No, we paid Berkshire South.
And then Berkshire South, they're on the payroll. I used to trace those people down.
Is this called a stipend, or what's it?
No, it's just the payroll.
It's a contract.
Yeah, so we have a contract that, we have a contract with them, but they.
I'm just calling contract.
Where we, where we take it from?
The park maintenance, spring, fall cleanup. So at the end of the day, when all the math works out, they're like as close to zero as we can get, so, but using that.
So it's still within parks, so I feel okay about it.
Yeah, it's all within parks, yeah. It's just, again, it's all about that appropriation. Maybe it's something we should think about, because I was looking at.
I feel like within the lines.
I was looking at.
It's not just moving from one side to the other, but inside parks, like, why are we gonna say?
But, well, the problem is how it was, is how it was.
I think there is a warrant.
What we have to do is. The warrant broke down all the, like, broke down every, all four lines of parks as opposed to being like, this is all expenses.
Well, we changed that this year, but we got rid of the spring and fall cleanup being separate from the rest of everything, and things weren't being coded correctly anyway. That was part of it too.
It's a lot more detailed than there used to be in the budget, but this is detail that's only seen by management. It's not seen by, the town gets parts and wrecked.
No, we, the lines, the lines this year are parks commission, lifeguard payroll, and administrative fees, and parks lawn maintenance. Last year, there were four lines. Now there's three for parks. Some of the transfers we did were to subaccount. Some of the transfers we did were into sub-accounts, I don't really think that's how we've been doing them, but I think it's fine. And it's, if any, it's only more detail.
Yeah.
I thought we used to be able to transfer into a line as we voted on at town meeting. Or I know that we don't need to do anything as long as they balance each other out, but what you were saying, they were so negative that they brought the whole line into the negative, so then we do need to do something.
The way, the way, the way I look at it is there are, the way I looked at it in my head is that there's salary and expenses. But that's how I kind of always looked at it, but a lot of times in the warrant, we'll take those, so many times we take those expenses and they get broken down into what you might call like a sub-account and like this, like the six thirties or one ninety-two's and one forty-fives. So I, I, I don't know, I, I don't know if at the town meeting, the, cause I know in a lot of places, they do, they break it down by salary and expenses, and that's what you vote on at the, at the town meeting. And then when you run your budget reports, like if I were to run my budget report, there might be four other lines that are associated with those expenses or three other lines that are associated with those, with those uh wages, like for example, the library right now just has a, a wage line for all, all their, for the three, this three staff members over there, it's just one, one, one dollar value. I think their, their expenses, they've done a lot of that too, but it all depends on what it is.
And library expenses up until last year was two.
Yeah, and then they brought in.
Or three, and they, they got rid of one because it was maintenance in general.
Yeah.
And, and I think right now we have a funny thing with fire department where we have fire department, other expenses, entire department equipment and maintenance.
Yeah.
And you just kind of wonder what's the difference between equipment and maintenance and other expenses.
And some departments are like really broken down, like the town office is broken down into electricity, heating, water, shower, showering house.
But that's.
But that's, that's.
We can, we can under and overspend those as long as they all come to a wash at that.
Yes.
Within that whole line.
Within that department, yeah.
But I think it also depends on how it gets voted at the.
But they're, they get voted on as town offices.
Yes.
Yeah, so as long as town offices isn't a positive.
Yeah.
Town electricity can be under.
Yeah, that's why, that's, and that's why I was, that's why I was looking at the warrant, as I was looking at all this, trying to separate those two out.
I'm gonna guess equipment and maintenance literally into the fire truck, whereas other expenses might be, we look paper.
Yeah.
As one random item.
That's one way to split it up.
Right, like, anything that isn't for the truck.
Yeah, I don't know how it's used or not.
I don't know there.
And maybe there's a good reason and maybe, but I think there is something to be said for keeping it simple of how much are you paying the people and how much are you paying for the things?
Yeah, on stuff.
Because when it's beyond that, it's, doesn't always mean a thing.
The only, I can see the value in tracking what's happening with the trucks separately from other expenses.
Yeah.
But I don't know how, if that's how it's actually, because it wouldn't, I don't know that it would be a value on a daily basis, but on an overall basis, if we're talking about, okay, what's it costing us to maintain truck forty-seven, I made that up. I know we don't have a forty-seven, truck forty-seven, or what is it costing us to maintain all the trucks, um, versus what is it costing us to run the building?
Trucks and other equipment.
Well, individually, they could be voted internally.
Right, I mean, and probably he has that information, it's just a question of how much that we take.
Ultimately, the state, schedule A, really goes by department, the police department. I would, they don't care about any of that stuff, that's management, that's not management.
Yeah, I was just thinking for us, this is totally for us.
So, you know, when, when all is said and done, you have to keep all this stuff by state, okay?
Right.
Go to the state, it's really summarized by department.
Yes.
Right.
So once again, I think the finance committee needs a motion.
Yeah, you guys want to do that?
I move that we approve.
Well, six of these.
The appropriation transfers.
Okay.
Any discussion, hearing none? Oh, there's a second hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
And on the select board side, I'll move that the select board approve the six, um, transfer request as, as three and three described.
Uh, what second?
We will call a vote.
Yes.
And yes, so they're all approved by vote.
Anything else for the finance committee today?
I think that's all for you all, we have a couple of, one, you know.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I believe the finance committee adjourned.
Second, hearing no objection.
Hasta la vista, baby.
Hasta la vista.
Try not to die, be frustration.
All right, so we'll get right into a little bit of select board business, so the treasurer contract.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, thanks for subbing in.
Appreciate it.
Treasurer contract, Roger and I met with Sarah last week over the phone, we went through point by point, um. Nothing really earthshattering. She wanted to take the select board and, uh, principal assessors, kind of people who have contacted her from time to time.
Take select board and assessor?
And.
Out of contacting her?
From time to time, out of the contract. Um, which I said fine, because there's been times in the past where there was copious amounts of contact with the treasurer that she thought was eating up the time of people in her firm. So I said fair, I didn't love it, but, you know, we had to, we've done some agreement.
What do we, so what happens if the assessor does need to consult?
Prior authorization of the town administrator, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and frankly, the ma, the accountant and the tax collector and the town administrator are all listed as people that the treasurer will, will work directly with, and those really are the people that she does work directly with.
The accountant and the treasurer and the what?
The accountant and the tax collector.
Tax collector, okay.
Work directly with, with the treasurer on, on a, on a, um, regular basis.
Even with the, the assessor, because we've written that too.
But she doesn't.
We removed that.
And she said that she doesn't even really use her talk to the treasurer.
Right.
Um. Then there, you know, a lot of the minor changes she was very agreeable to. Um. To, I told her that we would review the amount that we're paying her in December and discuss a second year, an extension, which is not really very different from what we have been doing, but she wa, was adamant that she's been losing money on monitoring. And I said, well, we'd like to make this work for everybody, so rather than make any drastic moves, let's just look. Cause she acknowledged that some of the ongoing issues with payroll have been a time burden. So she acknowledged that maybe once the dust settles and we have, uh, time and attendance working a little bit more smoothly, we might be better off.
I mean, like, I hate to raise this ugly specter, but can we get it to work smoothly or do we need to scrap it and do something else? I mean, I, I, I was supportive about the concept, but if the, if the, if it ain't working, either we have to fix it or we have to find another solution.
I think there, it can be fixed because more and more I find some, I just find some inconsistencies that aren't necessarily software-related but are more, um, probably setup related.
Okay, what's definitely software-related and setup-related?
Well, software is, you click something and it doesn't work.
Ah, setup is, it wasn't made it to a way that.
Well, setup is, we need to get this statement paid out, how are we gonna get paid out and.
Or, or, or we need to make sure that when two people in the same department do the same thing, that at the, at the end, it, the same thing happens. I've seen things like that, because I'm, I'm still trying to kind of understand exactly how some of these things work in there and I've seen some inconsistencies with that, where like two people will do the exact same thing and then at the end, it's like, it, it's not equal.
So the only thing I can think of is that it's like when your system is sufficiently flexible, if there's more than way to, one way to do something and one person gets adjusted one way and then the other person gets adjusted another way, in the end, it's not actually the same and that.
Yeah, and that's what I'm finding out, yeah.
But I think, oh, and there wasn't always kind of a, an intimate understanding of kind of where we need to get. Like at the end of the day, we just need to make sure all the statements are paid out and what's the simplest way to get there. And dividing by twenty-six point one, was it twenty-six point two?
Twenty-six one one.
Twenty-six point one, but having someone put in a one every time was never going to get you to the right amount.
Right.
Cause they can only put in twenty-six pays or twenty-seven pays, they can never put in a twenty-six point, a point one. So there were certain choices that were made, that were kind of management choices, not a fault of the software, how to get money to people, that were not the easiest way to do it, and part of it's gotta be just trial and error, like, oh wow, we tried that, it doesn't work. Part of it was definitely communication, I think, to department heads, and that was something we discussed at our meeting, was we need department heads to have kind of like an open line of communication to say this isn't working and then get feedback on something, but also to take accountability when they're signing off on everyone in their department, that like being very careful to certify this is accurate, like, because part, that has not necessarily been happening. And I think part of, when you take papers from four or five employees and you sign your name at the bottom of them and you pass them in to get paid, there's a little bit more obvious weight to it than when you just go online and say, yeah. So that was part of it. Another thing that we talked about was bank and Sarah thinks that we might be with Unibank, you know, through a year, but that, that there are many, many people at Unibank, so one, and we're kind of being, uh, you know, we're being pragmatic, but also sensitive, but she's gonna look into, i- if we are with Unibank, if we're not, if we have a kind of a, an end of our time with Unibank, we can put out, uh, like quotes, I get at least like two quotes. But if we're not at the end of our time, which I, her gut feeling was that we weren't and that we had another year, that there are many people within Unibank, so we.
Our different point person.
A different point person. Um, so she was pretty over that. She, we had a decently long discussion about the seven and a half hours average and how it's atypical of any of our other contracts and how it's not specifically saying this is the limit and beyond that we'll charge that. I also then ran the numbers and realized that seven and a half hours, based on the price of the contract, if it was averaged seventy-five hours per week, that's over a hundred dollars an hour.
I don't know whether going right for treasurer is that maybe reasonable?
Um, I think for like an auditor or for high-level work, that's absolutely reasonable. I think for some of the things that we're doing, like having someone check off that each bill is in the, you know, is attached to the details, that in my opinion is not a hundred and five dollar an hour work. And I, and I, and I don't think anyone would say that it is. So, in any, in any case, we talked about how we're set for this fiscal year, we're tied to the budget that we passed at annual town meeting, we're gonna do something there, but we're gonna put in a contract that we're gonna review the hours and the payment in December.
And does she actually give us hours?
No, no, but she's gonna put something together for us. And I mean, I think that was part of the discussion that I had with her, that I was like, we want to make this mutually beneficial, but when there's an hourly limit that's vague and only says an average of, doesn't say a maximum or minimum, and we never see the hours. And by the way, I have no doubt that at least seven and a half hours are being worked each week, but then also feel like a lot of the seven and a half hour work is not a hundred dollar an hour work. I mean, this is, some of the work that's being done is the kind of work that could be done by, or hopefully by the offices and positions that we're gonna hire for twenty-two. Not a hundred plus.
Does she have, is she a sole practitioner?
No.
No, she has a.
She has the.
At least one.
She has a, about ten plus, it's ten to fifteen.
So the question is, is she doing it all or is some of it being casted out?
No, there are, because.
And if some of it's being casted out, then that is weird.
That's one thing.
Right.
So, we have every other week, someone in the firm comes in and basically does that in their town hall. So, long story short, I feel like even if the hours come out to be ten or twelve or fifteen, we should look at what are other towns paying? And what are other towns being charged by the same firm before we say, oh, it's actually twelve hours, we should pay you twice as much. Cause I don't know that that's really a good assumption, and I think we just should kind of look at what other towns are being charged by the same firm and what, um, and what other towns are paying for different firms. All that being said, I had added in the language about a review in December and about, I've been looking at a two-year extension. Donna just got back to me today with another minor comment about a very minor kind of typo and, uh, and also okaying the language, so I'll have to send that back. I'm assuming we won't meet next week and we'll meet, our first meeting back will be with the bylaw review committee, so I'm hoping it will be ready to sign it down. But it's, it wasn't.
No, it took what it took, like.
But i- it's good to kind of begin the conversation and I've never really had that conversation with her because the last contracts, we just didn't really negotiate closely as a board, but it's interesting to hear where she's coming from and. And we also, we have, we have to make it mutually beneficial, otherwise it's.
Otherwise, she's gonna drop us and I wouldn't blame her.
Yeah.
Right, like, it, it's a business decision, it's not personal.
So.
Um, so yeah, and, and I think your approach is good.
We'll see.
Um, cool, what's up next?
Waste management.
I have uh, this right here, which we've had the email.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if I, um, forwarded this to you, but I raised the question of like, wait, what's going on? Because we have the fighter kind of, this is for bulkings, not for the rest of the cycle.
Yeah. Okay.
That's why it's separate.
So it's only looking for one signature, so I'm assuming it's this select board chair.
Um, but we should go on that.
I move that we sign the one-year contract with waste management services for empty waste, etc.
Second, and if there's another discussion, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
And yes.
It's always funny, we like almost always have all the discussion before we, all the votes, so there's never, part of the discussion is we've already had it, sometimes it's a lot of it, it's just, and it totally makes sense, but.
You're just waiting for this, uh, this area out here to fill up.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
We can ask it all kinds of.
I think too, if we were really trying to move through, we wouldn't discuss anything that didn't have a, a fast motion.
Right.
But also being kind of small and in somewhat informal word, if we did that here, we'd be constantly amending motions and canceling them. That we can talk about first, yeah.
I mean, and I don't think there's a right way and a wrong way, like it's, this is working for us, so if it ain't for. What's up?
Town administrator, unanticipated.
I, I, I don't really have anything, just something for the next, um, meeting. We had the, I got the inter-municipal agreement buying between the town of Great Barrington and the towns of Monterey, this is about that.
For the council on.
The council on energy, which has to do with public transportation services, I'll copy it, send it out to you.
Okay.
Can you please just send it to Catherine and Lynn as well?
Yes.
Yep.
Do they not get it or not? Okay.
No, it came addressed to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
And written came, not email came?
Exactly.
What? Okay.
Old school.
Yeah.
Yeah, if Catherine and Lynn, you, we've been doing it for years, but sometimes they have, have had in the past ideas about how we might rather spend the money, but I think we decided at the end that this makes sense.
I think so, last year after Lynn investigated it all, we think this was a better choice.
Yeah.
Um.
That's, that's really.
There's no minutes, I have them drafted roughly, uh, they'll be ready for next meeting.
Um, so I have one update, which is that I did finally, um, connect with Mary and Lindsay Katz is the person I'm gonna be working with. We chatted briefly, Mary looked over what we have and had some suggestions, Lynn, she's leaving, but Lynn's gonna take point. Um, gonna present me with like a spreadsheet saying here are all the areas that we think should be updated, they have some like policy language, there may be places where they suggest we switch it out and then we can just words match what we wanna do. But, and then, uh, next Friday, uh, a week from Friday, she and I will get together and have that discussion.
Yeah.
And then I'll have one for you.
That's very exciting.
Yes, I'm really happy at that, and there's definitely some things in there that need to get changed.
Yeah.
It'll be great to have some proposed methods or language for those things. Um.
Well, I'm gonna do one group housing.
Oh, no, I knew what it was. Um, what's the status of the office assistant?
I had three through Indeed and I reached out to Mary to ask her how she wanted to deal with them.
Oh, you know what she's going on vacation.
Yeah, you're not gonna hear about, she's, she's gone as a. Yeah, you're not gonna hear about, she's, she's gone as of, yeah, I think she might be in for a couple hours tomorrow. I have no idea if we're gonna say.
How about, how about, uh, tell Mary that this is urgent, so if she needs to designate someone else, let's do that.
I mean, is there a reason to have the, I like, I guess it's easier to have them vet the people.
Yeah, I think that's the whole idea, and especially with Indeed.
Yeah, there, there can be some.
There can be people that.
Some real. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not certain, there's a couple of them there that I'm not quite certain of.
Cause that's so easy for people to just hit.
Yeah.
Click the thing, yeah, I wanna apply for that. And there's not even the vetting of like, did they decide it was worth printing out a thing and a stamp?
Right, right, right.
That's the, you know, the first thing, it's gone.
Yeah.
It's like when I was applying to college, there was the common application.
Right.
So you could apply to twenty schools and I think, I kind of did too, why not?
Yeah.
Okay, or ten, which I think, because you never know what financial aid you're gonna get and what, what schools you're gonna do, so Indeed's kind of the same, yeah.
Um, I can one up you. Like with science grad hiring, most of the departments have various ways that they hire. The math division, like they're within science, has, there's like a, an association and they have a specific one that's just for math hires, but it has an apply all. So it literally will send their resume to every single US college that has posted there. Doesn't matter how inappropriate, so when they post on there, and now they've gone to where they're like, we refuse to even post there. Because they'll put a job out and they'll get four hundred and eighty applicants and maybe twenty of them are even like appropriate and the, the others are completely like mismatched. They're expecting to be in an R one or they're like, they don't have the right training or they're, it's just they, they don't even read the description of the school, they don't, it's ridiculous. It was so extreme and the first year, they were trying to read them all and I'm like, I finally looked at them, what artist, Mike, he's the department chief. So he's like trying, I'm like, what are you doing? He's like, well, it's always, I'm like, this is so stupid, someone needs to just flip through them and delete all the inappropriate ones, you can't have a whole committee doing this, this is absurd.
I, I would get like a hundred of them and ninety of them would just be like absolutely.
Hundreds, hundreds of inappropriate ones, which is ridiculous. But I'm, I'm glad you even got three, but it doesn't sound like it was three real applicants, so I'm sorry.
It's hard to tell, it's hard to tell.
Okay, so yeah, definitely reach out because she's going, she's out of the office all day tomorrow, I think she has some hours on Wednesday, but she does, she is very good. Even if you sent her one now, she may answer it, she's pretty good about getting that. Um, when she is. Uh, I think that's all, I, I did go to the planning board meeting. Um, you referenced that one. Um, and Brett was there from the RPC, um, touching base with them on the plan for helping them with the housing issue and I, I think that he's kind of on point, they were happy with how he's gonna structure it and he's gonna come back again in August with a more detailed plan. But it basically, you know, narrowed down the obvious choices to for the schoolhouse, which I don't, you know, for reasons we already know is probably not gonna work. The Fox Hill property and possibly the community center, and I don't know what options there are there. And I, I mean, I did point out, there's a lot of wetlands, there may be some restrictions because of the deed, he said, well, at least the deed one is something he can, Brett said he can look at. Um, I mean, I, it's just something that was raised and it's got quite a few acres, so it's not an impossibility, but I still think this one's gonna be the. Um, Margie raised the possibility of, um, I'm not gonna call it the right effort, I wanna say co-housing, but basically contract as a thing where they hook up elders who want an Asian place with younger people who are looking for housing to try to match people up so that they're not living alone. Um, and they have that younger back that's checking in on them, but they did stay in their house. Which I think has a lot to offer it, it's the right person, yeah. Um, and that, that was basically all.
Um, just circle back around to the conversation we had last week about, um, uh, um, short-term rentals and LLCs in Monterey, there's seventy five of them. There's seventy five, uh, registered LLCs, or they're registered short, short-term rentals in, in Monterey. And there's, I think, I'd have to go back and look, but there is close to a hundred LLCs.
There's seventy five registered short-term rentals, NVRBO, Airbnb, et cetera.
LLCs.
It's, you know, it's their short-term rentals that are registered through the state, they don't tell you who they are, what they're registered.
Oh, so it's just short-term rentals, it's not LLC rentals?
It's not LLCs, no.
Seventy five SDRs.
But in town, if you go like to their access GIS, we have, you just do a LLC in, in the name of the owner, it'll, it lists out like, I think close to a hundred.
And there might be different ways to look, to look at it too, because I feel like sometimes they're worded.
Yeah, they are.
Like co-company.
Or, or sometimes they're just in, a lot of times, they're just in the, uh, the, the address. It'll be like, you know, forty four hoop I wrote LLC, as opposed to, you know, like Smith Family LLCs.
I'm trying to make sure I understand, I just wanted to beat it back, so it's seventy five short-term rentals.
Yes.
And a hundred LLCs.
Sometimes, something like that.
So, but not all of those are SDRs, some of the, and some of the SDRs are not LLCs.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright.
Yes, two almost un, unrelated.
They are unrelated, except that we know that some of the seventy five are LLCs, we just don't know which ones. And we don't know which of them are family LLCs. I have a lot, I feel very differently about the idea of some family that's owned a house there for three generations. It's made in LLC because there's so many family members occasionally renting that house out, but using most of the weekends themselves. I feel quite differently about that than I do about somebody purchases a house to run a hotel.
Well, if you're gonna look into it, also look into trusts and trustee and association, because those may also, I'm not sure, but those may also be ways that people kind of own property unattached to their personal name. And then also might be instances where those match up with an Airbnb.
Right.
Otis this past year voted in there, I don't know, I don't know how to vote it right.
We can't, we need to get that language.
So they, they have, they have it in their, uh, in their warrant.
Uh, Richmond also did one. So.
Alright.
Okay.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
We'll vote.
Yes.
And yes, meeting adjourned at six oh three PM.
And next one on the thirtieth, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you all, gentlemen.